All right. Good evening, Freedom Fighters. My name is President Heminger. Today is Monday, April 15. The time is 6:35. This is the April General Membership Meeting of the NAACP Arlington Branch. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Yes, we have President Heminger who is present, First Vice President James Younger.
Present.
Second Vice President Laurel Langhorn. Laurel Langhorn, I'm Secretary Wanda Younger, present. Assistant Secretary Kathleen McSweeney.
Present.
Kathleen McSweeney.
Present.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Treasurer Adriana Spain will not be with us this evening. Executive Committee at Large Karen Nightingale. Karen Nightingale, Executive Committee at Large Kelly Macbeth. Kelly Macbeth, Executive Committee at Large Nadia Conyers. Nadia Conyers, Communications Leah Maderow will not be with us this evening. Legal Redress Amy Stitzel.
Present.
Economic Development and Labor Gary Gaston.
Present.
Education Tia Alfred.
Present.
Environmental Climate Justice Julius Spain. Julius Spain, Health Tasia Iglesias will not be with us this evening. Housing Wells Harold. Wells Harold, Political Action Jan Marie Pena.
Present.
Religious Affairs Pastor Davis.
Present.
Pastor Davis.
Present.
Thank you. Religious, thank you. Religious Affairs Rosa Dunkley. Rosa Dunkley, that concludes the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm gonna just invite these folks. All right, they're with us tonight. We got a lot of technology going on. We have a really exciting program. We have a little bit of business that we need to get to before our candidate forum. National has established a very specific way of conducting general membership meetings. However, our executive committee met last night and adopted a different agenda. In order for us to proceed with that agenda, I would need a motion to suspend the rules so that we can use the agenda that the executive committee adopted. So at this time, I'd seek a motion from any member that would like to enter, I'm sorry, any member that would like to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. Was that Pastor Davis?
Yes, it was.
Okay, let the record reflect that a motion has been moved or, and it's been properly seconded. Is there any further discussion to suspend the rules? Any questions, any comments, any concerns? Sensing none, will all those members in favor of suspending the rules, would you please say aye?
Aye.
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 And all those members that oppose, you have the same right, please say nay. Are any members abstaining? Okay, great. Sensing none, we have suspended the rules. The first item on the agenda is the March 2024 financial report. Unfortunately, our treasurer moments ago did just have a family need, so she's not able to be with us at this time. The executive committee did review the 2024 March financial report. The finances aren't in good standing, but unfortunately, the treasurer's not with us to present that report. So I'd like to, if it pleases the membership, I'd like to move the approval of that report to the May 2024 meeting. Would any member like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to move the treasurer's report to the next meeting, May.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. There's a motion on the floor. It's to move the March 2024 financial report to the next scheduled general membership meeting because our treasurer cannot be with us. Would any member like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And who was that?
Kathleen.
Thank you, Assistant Secretary. Any further discussion on moving the March 2024 financial report to the next meeting? Okay, sensing none, all members in favor, please say aye.
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 And all members in opposition, you have the same right, please say nay. And any members abstaining? Great, Madam Secretary, let the record reflect that a unanimous vote to move that report to the next scheduled meeting. I'm gonna move into just a couple announcements and then we'll transition over to our school board forum. Moms Demand Action has reached out to us. They are seeking a member from the NAACP to speak at a rally that is to occur on June 8. They're asking for someone that would be willing to share a lived experience, someone that's been personally impacted by gun violence. We brought this before our executive committee last night, and the executive committee decided that they wanted to bring it before the membership. So at this time, would any member like to to volunteer themselves or recommend someone to speak on June 8 at a Moms Demand Rally, Moms Demand Action Rally, to speak on their personal impact as it relates to gun violence? Any members? Okay, hearing none, if you change your mind in the near future, please reach out to any member of the executive committee, and we'd be happy to brief you on what that June 8 rally will look like. Couple other announcements, and I will hand it over. Give me one moment as my computer loads. I did want to make everyone aware that this Saturday, we have the Third Annual Fair Housing Conference. You remember about three years ago, our branch, especially our housing committee, came together and said, "We really need to bring the community together to discuss the affirmatively furthering fair housing rule and fair housing in general in Arlington County." So we hosted our first ever and first annual fair housing conference. It was a success. I believe about 100 people ended up showing up to that. It was virtual. Last year, we had the Second Annual Fair Housing Conference. That one was held in person. It was well-attended. So here we are, the Third Annual Fair Housing Conference is set to occur this Saturday, April 20, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's gonna occur at HB Woodlawn. So we will be providing a free lunch as well. It's gonna be a great program. If you've attended the last couple of years, you know that we pack a lot of information into this conference. We know that housing affordability in Arlington continues to be a crisis. We're not only short in Arlington, but 100,000 housing units. So we know that this is predominantly impacting historically disadvantaged communities. So I want to invite you out to attend this very informative conference. It's gotten better and better every single year. This Saturday, April 20, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we will provide lunch, and I guarantee that you will walk away with a ton of knowledge. I also wanted to congratulate Roy Austin. He was successfully appointed to chair the Financial Audit Committee. The executive committee last night did formally appoint him to that committee. So that audit is underway. Of course, we review our finances every month at the executive committee level and here at the general membership meeting, and I expect no issues with the annual financial report. Our treasurer has been busy. We're one of the first branches in the entire nation to successfully complete our annual financial report as well. I also wanted to bring to your attention an event that we're co-sponsoring with the Arlington County Library. The event is called "The Right to Read." This is gonna occur on Thursday, April 18, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's gonna happen at Wakefield High School, and I want to just read you a little bit of information on what to expect. "The Right to Read shares the stories of an activist, a teacher, and two American families who fight to provide our youngest generation with the most foundational indicator of lifelong success, and that's the ability to read. When a child can't read, their chances of incarceration, homelessness, and employment increase. That's why Oakland-based NAACP activist Kareem Weaver believes that literacy is one of the greatest civil rights issues of our time, and he's fighting for a better reading instruction. What good is winning the right to vote if you can't read the ballot? Fed up with the bleak reading scores in our own community, or in his own community, Kareem files a petition with the Oakland Unified School District demanding change. So please join the Arlington Public Library as well as the NAACP Arlington Branch and the Arlington Public Schools for a free documentary screening of this film. So again, save the date, this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., it's gonna happen at Wakefield High School." Next, our next general membership meeting will actually feature the county board candidates. So tonight, we'll hear from all of our school board candidates running in the endorsement vote. The next meeting in May, we'll hear directly from all of the county board candidates, and that meeting will start at 6:30. We'll handle a little bit of business, and we'll jump right into the forum at or before 7:00 p.m. The last announcement that I have for us is just a reminder to save the date. Saturday, October 5th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., we have our annual Freedom Fund Celebration. As I mentioned, for the last couple of months, this event did sell out within three weeks. We do have limited seating. Our speaker last year was Simone Sanders. We are currently outreach to speakers now, but I promise you we'll have just as, have just as an exciting speaker as we did last year. Again, Saturday, October 5, 2024, it's gonna be at the Arlington campus of George Mason University. The event will sell out, I promise you. And our members, if you're a member of the NAACP, you'll get early bird specials, and you will be able to get those tickets at a discounted rate. So I did see a chat. It looks like someone says, "What's the date of the May meeting? Monday, May 20th. It'll be virtual at 6:30 p.m." All right, Madam Secretary, did I miss anything?
No, you did not.
Okay, great. I did want to acknowledge the elected officials that are here with us. I'm scrolling through the chat, so just give me a quick moment. Madam Secretary, if you see anyone, please let me know. I see we have school board member Mary Cudera with us. Good evening, Member Cudera. Would you like to say a couple brief words to the membership tonight?
I just finished dinner and joined late, so I apologize for being a few minutes late. I am happy to be with you and just looking forward to the discussion.
Awesome. Thanks so much for being here this evening. We really appreciate it. All right, so at this time, Madam Secretary, could you please bring up our esteemed moderator? All right, folks, and I apologize, I'm using multiple monitors tonight, so if it looks like I'm looking away, I'm just making sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. So, good evening. On behalf of the executive committee and the membership of the NAACP Arlington Branch, I'd like to formally welcome you to our school board candidate forum. The NAACP is the nation's oldest and largest civil rights organization in America. Our branch is fortunate enough to be one of the most active branches in the entire nation. Programs like the forum we're hosting tonight are vital to our civic engagement. We hope to have an informative conversation with the primary election or the school board candidates that are running in the endorsement vote that will allow you to leave the program more engaged, more informed, and better prepared to vote. As a reminder, the NAACP is a nonpartisan organization, and as such, we do not make any endorsements for any candidates or any party. We welcome candidates from all political parties, and tonight, we are not advocating. This program is about engagement and education. We were not able to locate any candidates running in any other party besides Democratic Party for primary. So while our former forum tonight is limited to these candidates, should candidates from other parties decide to pursue election in the 2024 primary or general, the NAACP will ensure that our membership, our partners, and the community has an opportunity to hear directly from all candidates. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and drop a link into the chat about the upcoming election, and this was an article that was put up, put out by R O Now. So when you have time, I encourage you to take a moment to read through that article. There's a lot of great information about what you can expect in the endorsement vote process. Here's what you can expect as far as our format tonight. We'll have a discussion with the school board candidates who are running in the Democratic endorsement. During the discussion, we'll ask the candidates a series of questions rotating, who answers first and who answers last? We hope to introduce a few rapid round questions where responses will be limited to 30 to 45 seconds only. The chat will be disabled for a majority of the forum, but you will be able to share directly with the host, and you will have about two minutes when we do rapid rounds to drop your questions into the chat. Tonight's forum is being recorded, and it'll be available to the public via our social and our communication channels in the coming days and weeks. Now, I'm pleased to introduce our moderator for tonight, Monique. Mo Bryant is an uncommonly favored, accomplished, and passionate leader with almost a decade of dedicated service to challenging racism. She has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to creating positive change right here in our own community. Mo was a member of the original steering committee, which established Challenging Racism as a nonprofit organization, and she joined the Board of Directors upon its creation in 2017. One of Mo's core strengths lies in her ability to facilitate courageous conversations with compassion and grace. With a profound appreciation for the power of dialogue and empathy, she has successfully created countless safe spaces for individuals and communities to engage in meaningful discussions about diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, and justice. Mo's adept leadership has empowered participants to explore uncomfortable truths, challenging, challenge systemic bias, and ultimately cultivate a collective commitment to dismantling racial inequities. In addition to her exemplary work at Challenging Racism, Mo has volunteered at the Reading Connection, APS Advisory Committees, and the PTA. She balances her impactful work at Challenging Racism with her roles as a devoted wife and mother of two children, bringing dedication and compassion to both her professional and personal life. With that, I'd now like to turn it over to our illustrious moderator for the evening, Mo Bryant.
Thank you so much, President Heminger. Good evening, everyone. I am truly honored to welcome all of our esteemed candidates and our wonderful community members to this important school board candidate panel. This evening, we have the opportunity to engage in an insightful discussion and to learn more about the visions and plans our candidates have for APS schools, staff, and students. All candidates who are seeking the Democratic endorsement for the school board were invited to participate. Joining us for this discussion tonight, we have Ms. Kathleen Clark, Mr. Larry Fishtaller, Mr. Chen Ling, and Ms. Zaraya Tapia Hadley. For this discussion, each candidate will have two minutes to give an opening statement, one and a half minutes to answer specific questions, and two minutes for a closing statement. We will rotate who answers first and jump in when your time is up. In order to keep the program moving efficiently, I will provide a courtesy reminder, 15 seconds before your time has elapsed, and unfortunately, I may have to interrupt you if your time has expired. There will be an opportunity to hear directly from the audience. We will open the forum with what we call a rapid round of questions, where each candidate will have 45 seconds to answer. Following this, we will proceed to questions prepared in advance, and we will do another quick rapid round, and we'll have the opportunity for community members to drop their questions in the chat at that time. So, let's make this a constructive and informative session for everyone involved, focusing on respect, clarity, and collaboration. Thank you all to the candidates for being here and to community members. Let's get started. All right, so each candidate will have two moments for your opening statement. During your statement, please tell our membership what are your top priorities for your term in office, if you are elected, and how these priorities would affect Black and other residents of color in Arlington. We're gonna start in alphabetical order by last name. Ms. Clark, if you would please start now, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathleen Clark, and despite the rosy picture that we heard from administrators last week, disparities continue within APS, impacting our Black and Brown students and our students with disabilities. The data shows that our Black and Brown students are not able to pass the SOLs at the same rate as their white and Asian peers during the critical early years. We haven't closed that gap, and I'm running for school board because I'm a passionate supporter of the students across APS who are being overlooked in our system. When I am elected to school board, I will prioritize closing the gaps in academic performance for our Black and Brown students, our English learners, and our students with disabilities. I will work to ensure that resources are distributed adequately across APS so that the resources are based on the needs of the student population and not based on their zip code. And I will prioritize eliminating the disparities in discipline and reduce the classroom removals, because we know that classroom removals hurt our struggling students by reducing their instruction time. It also publicly shames these kids to be kicked out of class. So instead, I will focus on collaborating with underrepresented communities to create safe and inclusive schools, because we know that students engage in their own education and perform better if their social, emotional, and physical needs are met. And I will act on the need to provide all students with access to high-quality after-school activities, help address the drug and mental health issues facing students today. In the last six years, I've served on the leadership team of the Special Education PTA, problem-solving and advocating for students with disabilities. I've served in numerous working groups and committees that focus on systemic improvements in APS. My professional experience as an internal auditor with Gap Inc. gives me the skillset to ask tough questions and get down to the root cause of the answer or the problem.
Ten seconds.
Okay.
Ten seconds.
I'll tell, I'm sorry. My name's Kathleen Clark, and I would be honored to serve your children by providing them with equitable access to a world-class education.
Thank you so much, Ms. Clark. Mr. Fishtaller, two minutes? Please unmute yourself.
There we go. Yeah. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you about our schools and our student population. My objective this evening is to convince you that of all four of us, I have a true understanding of what needs to be done, but most importantly, I have actually done things, and I have the experience that is essential to knowing how to get things done. There are five aspects of my experience that I want to highlight. Parenting, I have a son and daughter that went all the way through K to 12 in Arlington Public Schools. That high school component is important. Advocacy. I was the LULAC representative to Arlington Public Schools, and I joined forces with you, the NAACP, to provide equitable access to our choice schools. Leadership. I led the Science Advisory Committee, the ACI, and the County Council of PTAs. I went beyond inclusion to get your participation, to strategize, to make sure your voice was heard, understood, honored, and incorporated into actionable recommendations. We made real progress closing gaps. I'm a teacher at Washington Liberty in Wakefield. I know what actually happens in the classroom. The school board really needs this perspective in order to turn words into real governance. Governance is how you get it done. From my professional experience with NASA on space station and climate change research, I learned this, and I know how it's done. At this, all this went into my AEA PAC endorsement.
Thank you. Mr. Ling? Two minutes?
Hello, my name is Chen Ling, and I'm the proud father of an APS third grader and vice president governor. I'm running for school board to improve outcomes for students and teachers, reaffirm a culture of excellence for every child, and take actionable steps to solve challenges raised by students, parents, teachers, and administrators. A lot of us came to Arlington because it has a reputation for great schools and great teachers. I came to this country when I was eight years old, and I didn't speak a word of English, but a English language teacher taught me how to speak English in six months. She took the attention to teach me. In sixth grade, a teacher noticed that I didn't really know how to write, and she sat me down every day after school until I learned how to write. And I had many teachers throughout my, my public education that have taken notice of me and made sure that I succeeded and helped me succeed, because education is something that can lift all boats, but a lot of times that fails. When I was a high school senior, I tutored other high school seniors who have not yet passed the ninth grade proficiency exam, which was necessary for their high school diploma. And when I tutored them, one of the comments that I got was, this was the first time in their academic lives that someone took the time to sit down with them, explain things, and expect them to actually understood it, understand it, and that I continued to explain things to them until they understood, and they never had that before in that experience. The high school that I went to was about two-thirds Black. About half of my freshman class graduated with me for that high school. And so I think I have a unique perspective on the, not only the highs that, and the successes that can be provided with a public education, but also the failures that can occur as well when certain group, certain populations are neglected. Um, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Tapia Hadley? Two minutes?
Thank you so much. First of all, I'm honored to be here with the oldest and largest civil rights organization in the country. Thank you for doing this and having us. I am Zaraya Tapia Hadley, and I would like to earn your support and your number one vote in the upcoming school board caucus. And I hope to earn it because advancing many of the parties of the NAACP are not only what I do for a living, but they are who I am. I, like many of you, bring a unique perspective just by virtue of my life experience to many of these issues impacting APS right now. I'm also a 20-year Arlington resident, parent of two boys in APS. They're nine and 11 years old, and I've been privileged enough to stand alongside NAACP leaders at the national level, advocating across issues from defending our right to vote, to workers' rights, to civil rights more broadly, and to fighting for equity in media and technology issues. At the local level, I was proud to stand with many of you, as we kept a gun seller out of our neighborhood in Green Valley many years ago, and have also worked together with folks like Portia Clark and others to advance the Sherrington Employment and Education Center. On the school board, you can similarly count on me to be a leader with vision, with common sense, and a commitment to this community. First of all, because I'm a part of it, most families of colors we know live in South Arlington, so I hear first about many of the issues that are on your mind. Second, because I bring a set of skills that will help effectively push this vision forward. Being trained as a lawyer, helping shape policy across the nonprofit government sector, and similarly shaping the policies and investments of Fortune 50 companies that have invested millions of dollars in communities of color thanks to strategic partnerships that I've built. To close, I won't be coming to you to tell you how things are done or should be done. I'll be the school board member coming to get your concerns and your perspectives, and ensure that board decisions and policies take into account your ideas and that of parents who are part here too with us tonight, and similarly have many ideas on the best path for the safety and educational well-being of their kids. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We're gonna move into our rapid round response now, and this is a quick one-answer question. Are you a member of the NAACP, Mr. Fishtaller? Please unmute.
Sorry about that. No, I have been in the past, but I am not currently a member.
Mr. Ling?
I'm not currently, no.
Thank you. Mr. Tapia Hadley?
I've lapsed, but I am a LULAC member who is working very much in tandem with NAACP.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
I'm not.
Thank you. All right, we are going to get into our targeted questions. Again, as a reminder, you will have a minute and a half to answer the questions. Our first question is, how would you address the widening gap in reading assessment scores, especially for minority students who are underrepresented in early identification of learning disabilities as well as the gifted and talented programs? First up, Mr. Ling?
Hi. Two things. One, I'd like to have more intensive one-on-one tutoring and identify, have a better screeners for all kids to make sure that any deficiencies in reading, math, or other topics are identified early and often, and that we're providing the correct amount of resources to address those across the spectrum. See, one of the problems that I've always sort of seen is the, in the sense that there's an expectation among teachers that kill kids of color just aren't as good for whatever reason, and that gets internalized by the kids, so they're less responsive and less able to reach out even when they're, even when we're trying to identify gifted and talented kids. Um, we need to train our teachers and staff better to counteract that innate systemic racism that happens. If these are not people that have explicit racism, but there's, there are internalized things that get passed on to the kids that are in those classes. Uh, one of the kids that I've mentored recently, I encouraged him to take advanced classes in high school. And he notices the difference that how he is treated between the different sets of teachers on the expectations and on the.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pia Hadley?
Yeah, you know, it's incredible that Arlington started as a leader, being the first county that was integrated in Virginia, but the learning gap is actually worse today than it was then. Um, and I think one, one, one way to address it is of course subconscious bias and cautious bias. And I know that APS and Ms. Graves are working to hold workshops with teachers, staff, and others, and administrators more particularly um, on bias, which does come into play and on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. I also think that there is a way to address class sizes in South Arlington, particularly if we, as we're looking at the budget going forward, reshaping planning factors so that we can make sure that resources are not allocated equally but equitably across the county, which I think is our number one challenge. And this goes both for English language learners as well as for gifted and talented students. Um, and special education as well, oftentimes, uh, resources are not allocated according to need. One teacher in, for example, in, in, in one school mentioned to me how there are three times as many kids in that school identified for, um, uh, gifted and talented programs, many of them kids of color. But there, they have one-third of the resources of some other programs. So those are the kinds of issues I would definitely look into and address as a school board member.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Well, we miss it because we aren't looking for it. It's a huge problem. And as somebody who's worked in the disability community the last six years, we see it, we hear it, and we feel it. We have kids that can't read and we are passing them through into high school. They're graduating. They can't even pass those last, you know, the, the SOLs at the end of the year. It's ridiculous. We have got to ramp up the structured literacy and the OG methods uh, and the, those interventions in high school because these kids are graduating not ready for career or for college. And we need to ramp up that structured literacy. Elementary school, identify it early because we know that that third grade is that critical year. We switch from learning to read to reading to learn. And if we miss it, if we don't identify it then, and if we don't start throwing every resource possible at it. These kids are going to continue and they are going to be missing then in middle school and they are going to continue to high school and they will continue to be underserved and it is unacceptable. Reading specialists will help.
Ten seconds.
That is, that is just the story. We've got to fix this.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fishtaller?
I think the most effective thing that we can do right off the bat is, uh, get class size down. Our sizes are way too limited right now. Uh, teachers are stressed out. We are losing good teachers. We're having trouble recruiting new teachers. All of that, you wouldn't necessarily know unless you've been in the building. Teachers need time to connect with the student, to work with them one-on-one, to understand what their level of efficiency is. Uh, my mother was a kindergarten teacher for 30-plus years. Early identification of difficulties is the most important thing that we can do, but you can't do it if you don't have the time to do it. So we need to solve that problem. We need to get additional resources into those schools. We have to look at this as a, in a school-by-school basis, classroom-by-classroom. I do not trust summary statistics that are brought forward by the central administration. There are a number of ways that I can say that they do not know what's going on in the school. They, I, we need to understand it at the school and classroom level.
Thank you. Thank you all for your answers. We are going to go into the next question that talks about hate speech and vandalism. How would you plan to address recent incidents of hate speech and vandalism in our schools that have targeted students of color? LGBTQ plus students and staff and members of various religious communities? Mr. Pia Hadley?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's unconscionable that in this day and age, just recently at Wakefield, this was a situation, right? The Wakefield football team suffering um, this abuse. I think there comes into play restorative justice practices that allow, um, for forums, allow for, for, to bring families together because I think this is a family-wide and community-wide issue. It will take a village to eliminate these practices. As a school board leader, I think we have to, and all leaders have the responsibility in this community to speak out forcefully against such hateful rhetoric and to be examples of how to treat one another. People treat others this way because that's what they're saying adults do. Um, we have to start with leaders. We have to be those leaders. I commit myself to doing that. We have to have the hard discussions. We have to explain to our kids how these words have consequences and they impact people just as much as a punch in the face would. Um, we have to understand, we have to bring kids together. I think one of the things that, and one of the reasons I'm running, honestly, is because I'm sensing in Arlington County a bit of a fragmentation. We were, we have traditionally been a very connected, tight-knit community. I see that fragmenting. I want to come in and be a leader that brings that back. And that has everyone take a stake in schools, not just APS, not just the parents, not just the teachers and staff, but have this be a community-wide issue because it is, it really is. We have to support our youth. Make sure that they're feeling connected, valued, and that they understand the impact of their actions.
Thank you so much. Ms. Clark?
It starts with inclusive practices in school. It's creating a culture where people feel like they belong. Now, my son was assaulted at school for being autistic. We set him up and he went down. Is, is something that has affected my family and two years later, we still talk about it. And the fact that we haven't figured this out is, again, acceptable because we have kids suffering. We need to get better doing these restorative practices. When this happened, my son at Swanson, we were one of the only families went through the restorative practices because we believe in that and we believe in treating this with the culture and the respect it deserves. I've been engaged in anti-bullying ever since. And I feel very firmly, this is not going to change unless we really work accepting people for who they are and what they bring to the table. And that starts in elementary school because if you listen to how kids talk about the SEL lessons now, it's like forced family fun. No one wants to do it. The participation that they get isn't, isn't, isn't what it's intended to be. So I really think that this starts elementary and we keep working on this so that our kids understand that we work and live in a global culture. It is unacceptable to act that way this day and age.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fishtaller?
Thank you. Um, let me say, from the perspective of being in the classroom, uh, in high school in Wakefield, Washington Liberty, uh, post-COVID is a very difficult case. Students were out of school, um, for two years essentially. And when they came back, they were not prepared to be in class. COVID also created a divergence in the learning loss because some parents were able to provide tutors for their kids while they went off and did their professions. Most people don't have that kind of capability. I found that what I needed to do in the classroom, we give sermons from Brother Lawrence about how you behave in class, how you need to respect each other, how you need to be considerate of them, respect their dignity, and how you help them out, making it a class, not just individual one-on-one instruction that we did. So it needs to be present in each and every classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Ling?
Hi, um, and I believe someone did graffiti on top of Dorothy Hamm recently, which is particularly sad given that we just celebrated the 65th anniversary of the desegregation of Arlington Public Schools starting with, uh, Dorothy Hamm. There are two things. One, uh, like Larry said, a lot of these kids are acting out more post-pandemic than before, but this is not a problem that's new because of the pandemic, right? This is a problem that's been ongoing. Um, and the pandemic just made things a little bit worse. We need to have real consequences for this kind of behavior, whether it's restorative justice or something else. Um, but we also need two other things. One is identify the kids who do it and make sure that they, there's some focus on them to make sure that they truly understand that this is not an okay behavior and this is a, a, a learning experience for everyone. That these things still happen, these things have real effects to real people. And that we need to put a face on the other side of this. There's some kids doing stupid stuff because they don't think that it really matters and we need to show them the face of the people that they hurt and why this behavior is not acceptable. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Ling, uh, actually, piggybacking off part of that answer, we're going to go in reverse order and I'd like to ask, how would you hold those responsible and accountable for committing these acts of hate? Mr. Ling, would you like to go first?
Sure. Schools tend to have, right now, appears to be a limited set of options, right? There's suspension and that's really it. And they tend not to do anything because the goal is to keep the kids in the schools. Um, I'm reminded of a funny thing that China did when we first had people buying cars and having drivers. They started fining people for traffic infractions and no one cared because people could afford to buy cars and didn't care about the fines. And what they did was every time that someone, uh, broke a traffic law, they made the, the police made the person stand in the middle of traffic, in the middle of the intersection with a giant sign that said, please obey traffic laws for like two hours. And after that, the drivers became much better. We need to be creative about our remediation steps, right? Um, I know that there's a desire for at least the first time, the first time offenders not to do something that's really permanent on their record, but we need to do more than just a stern talk. We need to have them do something useful with the community. So they need to, and, and, and they don't, we don't, can't just put them to do community service because people don't want volunteers that don't want to be there. But we need to have something creative and I will solicit suggestions from the community on what that should be. The things that will be actually effective and have them talk to the people that they have affected directly.
Ten seconds?
Um, and actually that last part I think is really important. I think we need to sit them down with the people that they affected and have them through a mediated talk, really see the victims of their actions.
Thank you so much. As a kind reminder, please make sure to mute yourself if you're not presenting. Same question for Mr. Fishtaller?
Yes, um, thank you. Let me just say to begin with that the teacher is on the front line and we spend a lot of effort in building a relationship with the students. A lot of students are, have behavior issues. But it's the teacher who has the first opportunity to work with them. And then when we go beyond that, we have counseling, we have social services. Those things are available in Wakefield. Uh, in my experience, they are quite effective, actually. We can bring parents in. We can get them help if they need help from the county family services. All of these things we can do way before we're talking about suspensions. Wakefield does suspensions when the offense is serious. Uh, when it is just unacceptable, unacceptable because of safety. But we don't do it as a mechanism for, uh, uh, just disciplining students into behavior. We work with them. So, uh, that's the kind of thing that we need to be focusing on. Making sure we have enough time for the teachers to do it and that we have enough counselors to help them.
Thank you so much. Ms. Clark, same question, please?
Uh, hurt people hurt people. Working in this community, in the disability space, can tell you time and time again, how we are triaging behavior and we are not focusing on root cause. As an auditor, that is what I do. And if we back this up to understand where this is coming from, that is where we work on fixing it and healing. Restorative circles work, restorative practices work. They didn't just make them up because it sounded great on paper. My child got to go into a room and work through a hurt that was caused to him and the misunderstandings in that whole situation. It was helpful. I stand by these practices because I've lived them and I experienced them with our students with disabilities. When we say we don't discipline based on behavior, I know lots of children that had been suspended in elementary school because they acted out and we didn't actually address the behavior that was causing it. But when we have these issues come up where we have hate speech, we have all these things happening, we are not really triaging where we need to. And that is at the beginning where these kids don't feel included and we don't have a great culture. And it's, it is frustrating. It's really frustrating to sit back and watch this.
Thank you so much. Ms. Zaraya?
Zaraya, yeah. Um, first, I think it's important that students know and understand what are acceptable behaviors and practices and what aren't. And I don't know that we have that clarity yet as a school system. There needs to be very clear understanding and guidelines as to what is acceptable and what is not between, uh, teachers, staff, students, and principals, and the broader school system as a whole. We all have to be on the same page. And we all have to make sure students are clear on this. Um, I think the two issues at the heart of this, it's, it's kind of connection, like I've said before, connection and accountability. That's what I would do. So in terms of connection, people act this way also because they just don't understand each other's humanity, right? They don't understand the humanity of the other person. So enough of, again, clarity and processes and, 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 and processes and acceptability, what's acceptable, what's not, consequences to behavior. Um, and having those students go through a path along with their families, again, or guardian, whoever is responsible for this child, have it be a process for both of them to go through and accountability at the end of it, um, along with whoever was, you know, unfortunately on the other end of that, for them to also come through the process in a way that leaves them feeling, um, like progress has been made. And we have a lot of elders in this community and I live in Green Valley. I see it every day. We have folks who have been through this and who have a lot of wisdom and understanding of how to overcome these challenges. We need to tap that expertise. We need to tap that expertise and have that brought into APS and that is what I would like to do.
Thank you so very much. All right, we are going to segue. I think I heard a few key words here. Restoration, progress, and while we're talking about progress, we want to look at APS as a whole and our staff. And I'd like to ask each candidate, how would you improve teacher well-being, retention, and resources considering APS's challenges with attracting and retaining teachers and staff as well as large classroom sizes? Uh, Ms. Clark, you're going to kick us off.
We have large classroom sizes because of our budget, uh, the structural budget. Uh, the structural budget issues that we have. So we've gotta work on that and that is an aside because we can't fix any of this other teacher pay stuff until this is in line. Our teachers are not paid and pay is respect and we need to pay teachers. Their, their colas and, and their, um. Their step increases every year. The fact that we haven't done that and under Patrick Murphy, I think we missed four. Uh, over a very short period of time, I talked to a teacher, I lost over a hundred thousand dollars in that income. Uh, just a- as a result of that. So it is a huge problem that we are not. Paying teachers consistently. Now talk about class sizes, class sizes are off the charts and part of that is we don't have. Uh, face in some of those buildings. Uh, and particularly in South Arlington, we don't have the seats there. Not directly impacts our teachers available, availa- ability to teach those students. Uh, effectively, um. In those small class sizes. Culture matters. Principals responsible for setting the culture in their buildings. The superintendent is responsible for setting it for the district.
Ten seconds.
And we need to work on that. We need people to feel appreciated, supported for the work that they do when they show up every day.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fishtaller?
Yes, just to be very clear. Um, class sizes are unmanageable. And come with that comes the fact that you cannot spend the time that you need to with each and every student. You cannot teach advanced physics in a classroom that's, uh, twenty-eight seats and. You have thirty students. Can't be done. Properly. That causes stress in the teacher because they're not. Being able to perform up to what they know that they should be doing. So that combines together. Now, how do you solve this? You stop doing stupid things. So, for example, Fairfax has a senior corps of consulting teachers. These are veteran teachers who don't have, uh, don't want to continue in the classroom, but they are great mentors. I was in a class on special ed out at George Mason. And every single person in there other than myself, including the teacher. Had already a relationship with Fairfax County. We need to be much more aggressive about this. Um, HR, uh, in terms of hiring, I think, uh, needs serious reform. So, uh. Those are the, the main things that we can do. But it requires us to get class size down.
Thank you, Mr. Ling.
Okay.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Ling, same question, please.
Actions speak louder than words. When we. Start, um, furloughing teachers right before spring break and the simple administration building closes. And then they're just wondering whether they have a job next year. And it's a month later before all the job openings are, are, are available for, uh, for them. That's not showing them respect. The pay and cola, when it's, it's a negotiation of. Well, maybe we'll pay you properly again next year. It's not showing them respect. When we dump all sorts of extra paperwork and hurdles and bureaucracy at teachers. Instead of trying to work with them to figure out how to reduce that non-teaching load. That doesn't show them respect. And if we can say all the nice things that we care to do, but those are the actions that speak significantly louder than words and that's something we need to change. There are, besides taking away a lot of the stuff that, um. A lot of the mess trivia that they're currently having to do, the class sizes are, are, are a major, major issue. When you class size go above a certain point. Below that point, you're fine. Above that point, you switch between from teaching mode to classroom management mode. And all you're doing is putting out fires and dealing with problems instead of actually teaching, which means you're not able to see that a student is hurting. That a student's upset, that student's not engaged.
I can second.
And all the other problems stem from that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pierre Hadley?
Yeah, I, I know, I'm talking to teachers, it really boils down to, here's what I keep hearing. It's about retention, respect and affordability, right? I'll start with respect, just sheer respect, which means, you know, taking their insight and expertise into account as we're drawing up curriculum. Consistently across the board, I hear how teachers are not consulted or taken into account when curriculum is being drawn. Now, a school board member cannot draw curriculum. We have, you know, the school board member would have oversight ability and governance. Uh, to a certain extent over the budget, but money is policy, right? So we are spending mon- money on rewriting curriculums every two years. School board members have a right to then ask questions of SciFAX and how these curriculum decisions are coming along. And to make sure that teachers are accounted for. That's basic, I think, respect. In addition to rewarding teachers for their good work. Uh, you know, we keep highlighting great work done by teachers whose kids meet the SOL standards and that is and should be rewarded and valued, absolutely. But no attention is given to growth. What about those teachers who maybe their kids didn't make the SOL, but their kids progressed, you know? An incredible amount that year. That should be rewarded. Um, so I think we have to look at all those elements which goes, which also goes into teacher pay, which in rewarding them that way. You know, one thing that we can do is certainly look at lowering our debt, our bond debt and, and pay teachers extra with the, with the interest. Saves me the interest, absolutely. But beyond that, also looking at how can we use other positions. Um, in SciFAX or otherwise to be teacher-facing, having instructors, I mean, child-facing, having instructors be able to be more child-facing. Larry mentioned, you know, senior mentorship. How can we develop more programming that allows others in the community to come in and support teachers? In instruction and start there. Um, and finally affordability. And this would be work with the county that I as a board member would want to do to look at afford, making Arlington more affordable.
Yeah, that is your time. Thank you so very much. Uh, you're gonna have an opportunity to elaborate a little bit faster because in that same sentiment, we're talking about growth. Step increases and cola. What equitable evidence-based solutions do you propose for addressing governance challenges? And budget cuts within APS? And we're gonna kick off with Mr. Fishtaller.
So. The governance that school board members have is you can direct the superintendent. You can request information from one step down. We just had a disastrous report from the science supervisor. It used to be the day when, uh. The assistant superintendent for instruction was the one step down. And the science supervisor, uh, reported to, to her. We now have three layers of administration between the superintendent. And the, the science supervisor. I have no idea of why we need three people working on that. It also places the science supervisor out of the reach of school board members. Request for information. What we need to do is we need to get our own house in order. We had a report from the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Committee that said that Arlington's. Uh, budget submitted to them lacked clarity and transparency. It's disastrous. That has to get fixed. And I, I think we know how to do that, but if you're gonna go to make the case. That you need more money, you need to do that. And the school board is the one that has to go out to the community and make that case.
Thank you. Mr. Ling?
Do you mind repeating the question, actually?
Sure, not at all. What equitable, evidenced-based solutions? Do you propose for addressing governance challenges and budget cuts within APS?
Thank you. So for the governance challenges, that's one of the focuses of my campaign, uh, which is changing how the board. Makes decisions and considers proposals. Right now, um, I feel like the board makes a lot of decisions without a complete set of information. And part of that is the way, um, that, uh, like Larry said, they send questions to staff. And the answers back from staff are not always. Complete, accurate, uh, or even addressed a question from the board. If you go read the board docs. You can see that the, the question from the school board members were good questions and the answers were all over the place. And without that good base of, that, that set of good responses, we can't make the, the decisions. So I would like to change the governance structure so that we can have more, uh. A, a tighter cycle of question-answer with the staff, so we can make sure that we're asking the right questions and finding the right answers. And one of those questions is the budget. APS, uh, and there's members in the school board on this call right now, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, uh, later, but, uh. We don't, we haven't really rebuilt the budget from the ground up to see where every single dollar is going and what every person that's on salary is doing. And how, and, 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 and find ways where we can make creative cuts, so we can actually do the things that we said. Of paying teachers more and then having more teachers in our classrooms.
Ten seconds.
And that's something we need to do. Uh, we currently pay more than other school districts. It's not just the debt service. And we pay our teachers less and that is, that, that's something very wrong with that. That's something, that's something we need to figure out.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Pierre Hadley, same question?
Sure, one of the elements, key elements of my campaign is transparency and communication and improved communication, um, between the school board and the, the broader community. So, uh, one quick example, um, special education teacher I spoke with. She mentioned her frustration that, that, you know, the, the coordinator in SciFAX spends the day in SciFAX. Getting basically directives to then ship out to teachers and then goes in and. Gives the directives to this teacher, where I think it should actually be the inverse. I think our coordinators should spend the day with the teachers. And understanding what the needs and challenges are and then inform policy that way. So that's just one quick example. In terms of, uh. The community engagement, I think is also critical. I, I would hope to come in and improve the way the school board communicates with our. Parents and families and other stakeholders in the community. And that includes parents, um, for example, parents that are not English dominant tend to use WhatsApp more. Why not use WhatsApp as a channel to communicate better? I would come in not expecting the community to come to me and office hours and school board meetings, I would make it a priority. This is central to my campaign. To be out where the community is. Again, I do this not just as, as a practice. It's, it's who I am. It's, I'm already out in the community and that's what I would want to continue to do, whether it's civic association meetings. Um, to be there and not to take the picture, but to be there to sit there and listen and actually take that intelligence and information back. Um, and in terms of spending, I want to really look at the planning factors. I would want to do a very deep dive into planning factors so that. Because my understanding right now from looking at them, there is equality there, there's not equity. In the sense, mm-hmm, thank you.
You have ten seconds.
Oh, ten seconds, great. And for example, one key school, uh, teacher mentioned she, they have. Three times as many gifted and talented students as they do special education teachers, but they have three times as many, um, instructors for, for special ed. That's not to take away from anyone, but assess planning factors based on need of, maybe another school needs more reading specialists. I know principals have some flexibility here, but we should be setting a vision of equity from the school board.
Thank you so much.
The strategic plan helps lay the foundation for all that and I'm vice chair of the strategic and hearing committee this year. But we have been laying out the framework for how the next six years are going to run. I can tell you from also being on the committee to work on the planning factors for inclusion. That planning factors are the baseline of everything that we're supposed to be doing. We haven't revised them since the eighties and nineties and since then, we totally changed how we do instruction. So we have this, we, we have a, a gap there between the instruction that we are providing and. How we are implementing it in our classrooms. That planning factor is supposed to help with that piece. It is the funding for it. And it's, and it doesn't reflect our current methods. And then in terms of budgeting, you know, why can't we, um, integrate, uh, like a. An equity-based tool that would help ensure that we consider factors like race and economics. Um. Into the budget development process. Having talked with principals over the years specifically as I was trying to understand. Our whole, uh, point to people here and point to here and how we make that into a, one individual. Um, with the planning factors. Uh, it, it is eye-opening that principals actually don't know exactly where all of those dollars go. Because they are given a budget and they are given a headcount, minus touching. Your English language learner, um, headcount and your special education headcount, you can move those, those pieces around. When you move those pieces around, that principal leaves, you have no idea where they actually spent those funds. School board needs to provide some parameters around that, ensure that we, we can determine ROI. For how we are running this.
Ten seconds.
I'm good.
Thank you so very much. Uh, we're gonna take a quick pivot to a question from the chat, which, this is a question for all candidates. Advocacy and action matters. What was the last issue that inspired you to contact an elected official, local, state or federal? And why were you motivated to do so? Mr. Ling, would you like to start us off?
Sure, um, the most recent, perhaps I'll, I'll skip that one, but the most recent is to the county board for school funding. Uh, because, uh, if we don't have proper funds for the county, uh, we're just gonna be revanching deck shares on, on the Titanic. Uh, and, and, and now these things are, are gonna come to pass. Uh, and I've been going down the list of county board members one by one and talking, trying to talk to them individually. And lobbying them on the importance of funding our schools properly. Um, prior to that, I, the last time I actually lobbied someone was my high school principal. Uh, which was a long time ago, uh, and because of the school policy where. We didn't allow students from other schools to come and, uh, join our after, after-school activities. And there was a group of students, we had an excellent computer science club and there were a group of students that wanted to come and learn and we turned them away. And I thought that was an absolute shame because it costs us nothing. And it's when, when people want to learn, we need to encourage that and nurture that and help that grow.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Uh, last week, we did a news article or an interview, uh, about the Behavior Intervention Services program. So my family benefited from Behavior Intervention Services. We have two children with disabilities and when my. Four-year-old, well, my now thirteen-year-old was then four, uh, we. We had to keep them safe. We did not know what to do. There are no manuals out there for it. Um, and if you met one child with autism, you've met exactly one child with autism. And, uh, Behavior Intervention Services came into our house and helped teach us. My husband and I grew up. A very traumatic background, um, son of a disabled vet. Um, and, uh, had to learn how to best parent. Our child. That is a very humbling experience. Be, uh, to think you know what you're doing is right for your child and not get that response that you want. And have someone coach you through how to do it better, meet needs of your child. I can't tell you how much that experience changed. Our lives as a, the Clark family. We are still married today because we got that help. Um, and many other, uh, families of students with disabilities and divorce. And the last time at the state level I did this was that silly free-strikes-you-out rule last year that the. Current governor tried to pass, which would disproportionately impacted our students with disabilities and our black and brown learners.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Zariah, um, to Pierre Hadley?
Yeah, uh, well, again, I'm an, I'm a professional advocate, so I do this every day of my life. It's who I am. It's what I'm passionate about, but specifically to Arlington. Uh, most recently, it was having a conversation with the superintendent on the eighty-twenty, um. Dual-language immersion program where there had been a potential issue there with a gap, but it was by then already resolved, so we just chatted about that. Um, the program's moving on as, as originally planned. Prior to that, I was one of the folks who spoke at a school board meeting to defend, uh, the healthcare benefits that were going to be cut from our extended day staff. My kids were no longer in extended day, but having been in the program for enough years and have, knowing all the families in extended day. I just couldn't fathom what could happen potentially if, if those cuts had gone through and we'd lost what is honestly essential staff for so many families. So I advocated to defend that. Prior to that, after the lockdown in Wakefield, I was very active in some PTA meetings and speaking with the principal at Claremont and other schools. But specifically Claremont as to, you know, the need for us parents and families to have more transparency and insight as to emergencies and the emergency management of our schools. We, that moment was critical in that it led me to realize, oh my God, I really don't know what my school is going to do in the case of an emergency. Like I have no clue what the process is. And so it helped me go and ask those questions and learn and advocate for, for us families to be part of, again, involved in part of that process.
10 seconds. Thank you. Mr. Fish taller, same question, please?
The, let me just say that long ago, LULAC and the NAACP joined forces to defend what is essentially now referred to as affirmative action. Making sure that inclusion working. A lot has passed since that time. I was in Wakefield when it was locked down. I was in the classroom where that student that caused the lockdown happened. So I pursued with the administration exactly why are we so unprepared to provide security? But most recently, I've been in touch with one of our current school board members, understanding governance and how the school board actually operates with that. And as I mentioned, I have met and spoken with the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Committee Chair about what we need to do to fix the budget that we submit to the county so that the county can have real insight into what we're doing.
Thank, thank you so very much. All right. In regards to some of the answers that we heard, another question came in. And this also goes along with the discussions that we just heard with DEIBJ. In regards to the anti-DEI legislation that's been happening across our country. We specifically remember a hotline that came about right here in Virginia to call for our teachers. What effect do you think that this has across education for students in Virginia? And we will start with Ms. Tapia Hadley.
I think it's disastrous and ignorant. Frankly, I mean, it's, it's disastrous because it is literally killing futures. I have so many friends who are in, in, in loved ones and others. I studied abroad for a time, but they were here and they went to some incredible institutions and could not have, oftentimes they were product of affirmative action, but that's not to say that they weren't deserving, right? It is absolutely having a disastrous effect on the openness of our higher education system. We've already seen a number of schools shut down their programs out of fear. And again, it's, it's, it's this climate of creating a climate of fear and distrust that trickles down and harms our broader society as a whole. It's also ignorant in that it ignores the fact because it is a fact that diversity produces better results and allows us to make better decisions. Every economic study, every academic study shows that a diverse team will come to quicker, better, smarter solutions and decisions than one who is not diverse. And it's just, again, harmful to the fabric of our society because it's leaving out the recognition that black and brown kids are not all, are, we are capable and we can, we can excel and we are exceptional and we can do great things. And essentially the messaging around this DEI is that we are not. And that the only way that we could is through affirmative action instead of seeing affirmative action just as a step that allows this incredible talent to flourish.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
The school district, I feel really strongly. We should disregard the calls to eliminate DEI. In my day job, I run the Equality and Belonging Group at Gap Inc. for the parents. And I spend a portion of my time advocating with Black at Gap and Pride at Gap. Do programming in ways that impacts our DEI practices at Gap Inc. I firmly believe that we are better as a community when we are inclusive and that that starts at the tone and it works its way down. So if we're not doing that, that's a problem. I went to the CEO event Wakefield back in February. I think everybody else was at the, you know, top one hundred for Arlington businesses or I was at the school. I was there because I thought it was amazing that we had this AP African American Histories class that allowed students to see and hear and understand the reality of that experience. And they were just, if I were a student in that class, ability to connect to that material, that's critical. We need to have more of that. I just, I left that inspired and wanting to do more.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Fish taller?
Sorry to say that elections have consequences. We have a man that wanted to be president. It's our governor. He's always used this kind of rhetoric to advance his own political agenda. It's ridiculous. If I'm on the board, there will be a board that will just ignore this. If they want to put us in jail, I'd be happy to go. At Wakefield, one of the best aspects of that school is its diversity in its students. And its teachers especially. People come out from central administration to talk about DEI. They don't need to. They need to come out to Wakefield to find out what DEI means in a school. Wakefield does far better than anybody I've ever heard talking about how to do it. We, we just need to keep our eye on the ball and do what we have been doing and encouraging people to accept one another and to have diversity.
Thank you so much.
Across all categories.
Mr. Ling?
The governor is doing what we've always done in this country, right? It's when when the, when Dorothy Ham was desegregated, Hamilton canceled all social events and all clubs and all after school activities at Dorothy Ham. Because the message was you're not welcome here. When black veterans came back from World War One, World War Two and demanded their rights because they experienced equality for the first time. We put up Confederate statues in front of schools and in front of courthouses specifically. We didn't put up Confederate statues after Civil War. We put them up when returning veterans demanded their rights. And we said to them that this isn't your space. This is our space. And this is the message of doing with the anti-DEI initiatives. It's saying this space is not your, schools are not yours. They are still ours. And this is the problem that has perpetuated throughout American history. This kind of thing encourages hate, encourages active hate. And it's something that cannot, we cannot allow in Arlington. We are better when we are together. We are better for the diversity. I know at least my wife and I moved to Arlington and not other places in Northern Virginia because of the diversity that Arlington has and something that we value. Especially as a mixed race couple, this is something that we truly value to have our children grow up in an environment where there are all kinds of people from all walks of life that they can encounter from day to day. Because that's what decreases hate.
Thank you. All right. Can I ask you all to take a deep breath? You've been going at it pretty strong. Thank you so very much. I am seeing some great questions from the audience. I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to hear some of them. So first question is, everything we've talked about tonight assumes that we need to catch students up so that they can be successful in the education system as it currently exists. Is that the right approach to take? Or should we really be talking about reimagining the system itself? Mr. Ling, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. I'm all for reimagining, but really we need to cover the basics that we're currently skipping. When there are stressors on a system, whether it's budget cuts, COVID, anything else is always the most vulnerable that are hurt the most disproportionately. That's why we're seeing our minority kids as well as people of all races from different, from more challenging academic backgrounds are slipping compared to their peers. They're always the ones hurt and we need to get back to basics. There's a lot of fancy stuff that gets suggested. But we need someone to sit down with them and say, let's figure out what you're having trouble with. And let's make sure that you succeed. And we need that attention. And it's, it's, it's not complicated. We know how to teach people how to read. We know how to, how to teach people to study. We know how to teach people math and science. We need to teach them and make sure that everyone feels valued. That we instill a sense that school is important. And that we need to make sure that they feel that their academic success is important to us and therefore it should be important to them. And that's what we need to do.
Thank you so much. Ms. Clark?
We do need to catch students up. I mean, we, we have students that you look back at as long as we've collected this data and are the same students have the same opportunity gap. At the same time, we need to look at the structural issues that are perpetuating this. And if you think about how, how all of this backs up within that strategic plan, we tried to ensure that all voices were heard. And we had representatives in that room were looking at for all the kids. And if we are going into conversations and we are thinking about, you know, literacy and we're not talking about improving the, the outcomes for our black and brown learners and students with disabilities, we are doing a disservice. We, I, I love hands-on project learning. I think it is a great way to learn. That doesn't work for every children. One of the greatest benefits we have here in APS, we have a variety of different schools your children can attend. I think that's one of, really, it is one of the best things about being here. So you can match your students' learning style with the, with the right instruction to do it. So I don't think that that's really the issue. The issue is consistency and the rigor we're putting behind the expectation for all students beyond grade level, when, when and where that's appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Peter Hadley?
Yeah, I mean, I think as a school system, we just need to be able to walk and chew gum. And I think we can, right, as a school system and, and on the one end, absolutely, we've got exceptional students. We've got twice exceptional students. So yes, let, let us look at the programs that are going to help those students continue to grow and feel challenged. I talk about making sure kids are learning, they're challenged and cared for. Absolutely. And that includes all of them. I, I talk about representing every family, every student. So absolutely, let's have that. But the reality is, as has been stated, there, there is a gap, especially for, let's consider the intersectionality of many students. Some are English language learners and special education students. Others are, you know, English language learners and also could be in a gifted talented program. So let's consider all these elements and the statistics do show that at the end of the day, the, the biggest gap is with English language learners and special education students. And students of, and again, I think there's also a need to look at how we're distributing resources across schools. Because the reality is that, you know, North County has, you know, seventy five percent of baseball diamonds for twenty five percent of the population, right? So, and, and green areas. So this is, these are the things that we have to look at, I think, as a school system when we talk about equity. And, and those things will help also bridge the learning gap where it exists or, and, and, and also, again, it's about motivating students, making sure they are motivated. They have a reason to come to school, that they're not getting reprimanded, but rather they feel like they're growing and contributing.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fish Tyler?
Reimagining absolutely is. So my whole career, my work as a systems engineer for NASA, all of my work has been to create the future. And I will continue that when I retire. Where is the future? It's in the schools. So that's why I went back to school, got my teaching certificate and started teaching. We have things coming at us. We need to anticipate. We failed over and over again. We failed to anticipate the return to school after COVID and what COVID had done to learning loss. We have artificial intelligence coming at us. I am the only teacher, as far as anybody knows, that has been authorized to use artificial, artificial intelligence in the, by students in the instruction of a science class. They use, I know how to do this. But they are going to use it. We need to show them how to use that stuff. How they how they should not misuse it, but use it wisely and correctly. Yes, we need to create the future together. We have the capability of doing that. We just need to make it real. We need to put resources to it.
Thank you. A question from the audience. What concrete steps would you take as a school board member to ensure APS LGBTQ plus students and staff, especially trans students and staff are safe and supported? Ms. Clark?
So this is of utmost top of mind for me. I have several friends whose students are transitioning. And the bullying that they face, it's, it's really so sad that this is happening to our students. It starts with inclusion and that culture. I feel like Dr. Duran has actually come out pretty strongly in support of our students, our trans students in the past. And I would continue to come out and support these students in force. No one has the right to feel unsafe, make you feel unsafe at school. And I, as a school board member, I would ensure we create that welcoming environment for each and every one of those students. Little things, not having, having to, you know, request special use of a bathroom, you know, a private stall. We should have some single use stalls in our, especially in our middle and high schools. Students can, you know, use freely, changing PE policy with clothing. So don't have to feel uncomfortable going into PE, you know, the PE room to change. Those are little things that we can do that make a huge impact in their experience at school each and every day.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Peter Hadley, same question, please?
Sure. I think it goes back to what we were saying earlier, talking earlier about education and, and from making people understand and, and that we're all human, right? That are, are, I, it reminds me of my, my friend Sol who trans, trans teacher in, in the system shared some situations with me that, you know, should not happen to any teacher that's trying to serve our students and care for them. Oftentimes, starting with, sometimes parents aren't, are ill informed and don't understand. And so I think this is again, where we have to come together as a community, have these discussions as to what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. Talk about what really does one Arlington mean? Talk about each other's humanity, represent each other's humanity by including ourselves. And when we talk about DEI and inclusion in the workforce, that includes the transgender community. I think to the extent we can keep making progress there, that will help. Having universal, again, applying policies across the board and accountability. If someone disrespects or has, or abuses anyone that is transgender, they should face the same uh, processes and, and, um, consequences that anyone abusing anybody else. Um, and I think also, again, just education and discussions and having, having that exposure and support, visible support on the part of leadership. Uh, yes, uh, like Kathleen said, Dr. Duran was very supportive when he was on the, on the board of, of education at state level. He was very supportive. If I were to be elected as, as a school board member, I would absolutely continue to do the same. And that doesn't mean I show up for a photo op. That means I sit down in, in Sol's classroom and I work with her students and the administrators see that.
That is your time. Thank you so very much. Mr. Ling?
So a couple of years ago now, um, one of my direct reports came out to me, uh, that she was going to transition. Um, she came to me because she told her parents and her parents said, yeah, if you're gonna change your first name, you should change your last name while you're at it. Right? Um, and I'm glad she came to me, uh, cause I was very accepting. And she, we had lots of conversations that were not work-related because I was the person that was safe to, to talk to. And the things that, um, the other candidates have talked about are the things that'll help trans students, will help all students, honestly, because again, we need to treat them like human beings and every one of our human beings should be treated with the dignity that entitles. One thing that I would do specifically is to make sure that at every school that it is known that there's certain individuals that are going to be safe to talk to and have that advertised early so that when a student is, is thinking about that or is our, have, have already, uh, transitioned or anything else. They know who is definitely safe to talk to and have that safe place so that they have that outlet. When all the things might seem scary. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fish Tyler, same question, please?
Yes, um, I have had, uh, trans students in my, uh, class. The other students are quite accepting. Um, I think a lot of the issue comes from outside of the class. And let me just say that, uh, this is one of those cases where a teacher is not student-facing. A teacher is engaged with their students. They're helping them build their life, their identity. Another thing I may mention is that, um, I'm a, uh, member of, of, uh, Bethesda Friends Meeting, Chair of the Religious, uh, Instruction, uh, and, uh, Pastoral Care. I was the lead in drafting our policy on marriage. It says that our meeting will solemnize the union of any two persons. Specifically, I had to work on that for a couple of years because people wanted to change it to be between a man and a man, a woman and a woman. And I held out for no. Trans is coming. We need to allow for that. That's what I believe. So, uh, that's the kind of thing that we need to, attitude that we need bring into the classroom, but you've got to give the teachers the time to build those relationships. You've got to give counselors the time to build the relationships that are going to make those students not just safe, happy, fully grown people.
Thank you so very much. All right. We have a few more questions from the community. Before we get into the last two questions from the community, we're going to take a pause and just ask a quick rapid question. This is a one-word answer question. All right. So what one word best describes your greatest asset as a school board candidate? Mr. Ling, would you like to kick us off? One word?
Intelligence.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Authentic.
I'm so sorry?
Authentic.
Authentic. Thank you. Mr. Fish Tyler?
Experience.
I, I apologize?
Experience?
Experience. Thank you. Mr. Pia Hadley?
Empathy.
Thank you so very much. All right, we're going to do one more flex question and then get back into a few more from the community. This one is a bit more than one word. You can have a whole sentence. This is going to be a quick thirty-second answer. In a crowded field of candidates, what sets you apart and makes you the best choice for the school board? Mr. Pia Hadley, would you like to click us off?
I'll start where I left off, empathy. I, I mean, I, I plan to go into the school board and I want to go into the school board precisely to take up the considerations of the community. That's one thing I feel has been missing a bit. I want decisions to be made. First, taking into account all the right stakeholders, not after the fact. So representation is crucial. I also happen to be from a community that makes up thirty percent of the school system. Um, and to me and where I live and who I am, I think allows me to have special insights that will, again, better serve the board to make better decisions.
Thank you so much. Ms. Clark? Thirty seconds, please?
Have, uh, students, as of next year, I'll have students in all three levels. I think I'd be the only school board member, member to have somebody in elementary, middle and high school. And I've been in the trenches for the last six years. I've been working to, to fix these injustices in the system too many families experience. And I, I will continue to work very diligently to make sure that we get traction.
Thank you. Mr. Fish Tyler?
I need to learn how to mash that mute button. Uh, what sets me apart is all of my experience from, uh, being an advocate, from being, uh, a, uh, a leader of, uh, the Advisory Council on Instruction and other things, from being a teacher and knowing what actually happens in the classroom. The board definitely needs that, that experience to be brought into their considerations. So that's it.
Ms. Ling?
Larry, you can hold on your spacebar, by the way, to unmute. Um, for me, I have a software engineering background and a problem solver. I solve complex problems for a living. This is what I do. I feel APS has gotten to the point where it needs someone of my skill set. I'm also extremely passionate about the success of public schools because of what it's done for me in my life and how much I'm successful because of it. I want to make sure that success is true for everyone else as well.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. So we have about three more questions and then we're going to get to your closing statements. This is a question from the chat. Some communities in Arlington have called for a return of school resource officers to APS schools to combat the increase in physical altercations between students, the issues with drug overdoses in our schools and a fear of guns and other weapons. Did you agree with the decision to remove full-time school resource officers in schools? And what is your opinion? Is appropriate, is the appropriate role for police in schools, if any? We'll circle back around. Mr. Ling, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. SROs can only do one thing, which is enforce and punish. They cannot care for our kids. They cannot teach our kids. They cannot solve the underlying problems that are, that are causing these bad behaviors. I'm fully supportive of not having SROs in our schools. I'd rather have the resources for more teachers. Because teachers can go and identify students that are having trouble before they have problematic behaviors. They can guide students. They can empathize with students. They can do all the things that SROs can do and more. We don't need more enforcers in our schools. We need more teachers.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Clark?
SROs give the impression of control. More than that, they don't, they don't really do anything. I do not support bringing SROs back into schools. I didn't, didn't think that they were effective in the capacity that they were used before. And I don't think it would be if they were brought back again. Um, and, and what's really missing is that this whole idea of connection, connections. So we need our students to feel safe and connected in our schools, need to have that trusted adult. SROs aren't going to do that. I mean, that is a hard stop for me. We, we cannot go back that way.
Fantastic. Thank you so very much. Mr. Pia Hadley?
Yeah, well, there, there is also a, a fact, a reality that those SROs have been now reassigned. The police department is also strapped and short on resources. So even if those SROs were to, let's say, desired back, it would take another eighteen months or it would be a process to do that. That's not really realistic at this moment because of those constraints. Um, I, if I were to be elected as school board member and I, I would want to first learn from our current SSCs to learn what their challenges are, learn about their training. I do think that anyone who is in schools needs to have deep training, training on restorative justice practices. I'd like to, and see if they are more of a mentorship figure. Again, I think our kids need con- connection, motivation. They need to feel, um, cared for and a sense of a, a bonding at school too. I'd like to see how that is working. Um, I, I understand ASHBA and there are parents who have talked to me about how they want those SROs back, but I think these are realities we have to address and also the statistics that both national as well as Arlington-specific data showed us that those officers were over enforcing against our black and brown kids. Um, so that is a huge concern to me.
Thank you so very much. And Mr. Fish Tyler?
Think we need to look at this school by school. Um, certainly from the perspective of Wakefield. We have issues in the community. We have gangs, we have drugs. Uh, we have had lockdowns because of, uh, people entering the building armed. We don't feel safe in that building. It's very difficult to cover all of the entrances and exits. Uh, I don't want to speak for the principal, but, uh, I think we need to have his opinion about that. Now, I will tell you that there was a fight that broke out between two rival gang members. And, uh, the fraud control could not be provided by the security forces in the building. They're not trained to do that. Uh, and so, so I was knocked down to the ground. So, uh, those kinds of things, we need to look at exactly what the situation is. I think the high schools are very different cases than elementary or middle. So just, we need to think about it.
Thank you so very much. All right, we're getting down to our last three questions before your closing statement. I think I said that before, so maybe it was four. All right. A question, how will you build partnerships with staff, students, parents and the community and ensure transparent communication between all? Uh, let's start off with Mr. Ling.
Early communication, early and often communication. So as a manager, I always have one-on-ones with my staff. Um, except I have, I have open, open door policy, but I always have scheduled one-on-ones with them every week. Because I get to hear their silly ideas. I get to hear the things that aren't really problems yet, but that just puzzles them. I hear all these other things. And we create a connection and we create trust so that when there is a problem, we have a common language to go and resolve it. And there's enough trust to say, let's solve this thing together. And that's something that I want to do, uh, on the school board, is to reach out to different parts of the community, not just the PTAs and not just the, the groups that have always traditionally talked the loudest, but actually actively find the, the groups that have not been involved and with the governance structure of the schools. And reach out and talk to them about things that are unrelated to schools probably at first. So that when there are things like SROs or drug problems or whatever else that are happening, education problems, I can identify those issues and have a common ground to talk with them. And I can identify what is actually missing because we have a tendency of everyone who's running for school board, we are all privileged. It has to be because of the nature of the position. And we, no matter what, what our backgrounds are, we don't know what's actually happening to a lot, a large number of families in Arlington as much as we would like to. So we need to have that communication so we can understand those problems and hear firsthand.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Clark?
With the advocacy I've done the last six years, I've already tapped into, uh, you know, a large network of community, particularly within disability, um, dyslexia. I have that ongoing group. I think it's also important to, you know, my, my job is be in that respect to listen, right? And to understand what the problems in the community are. Having a kitchen cabinet has, has worked really well for school board members in the past. I have been part of those, uh, kitchen cabinets before. As a representative for the special education PTA, you bring teachers in, uh, community members in and you have open discussion about the issues that are, that are transpiring. You use, um, you know, student advocacy groups to help support, um, student needs in the building. And lastly, I think you go into the schools, right? Like, I don't, I don't know how to, what needs affecting unless I'm there. And I don't want to go in and see all the great things that are working really well. I want to know from the teacher who's brand new, what, what their challenges are so we can help put things in place to help support them. We can help provide educational training if we need to for the principals so that they can help support their teachers and staff there. I mean, being in there and listening is what, we've got to make that part of the routine.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pia Hadley?
Yeah, well, I bring, I bring fifteen years of experience building strategic partnerships and that's what I would want to do as a school board member. For example, I know that the after-school literacy programs with Aspire work really well and are, are happening, you know, Arlington Mill and Drew and Randolph. I would want to encourage programs like those, multiply them. I think there's a lot of room to bring in the, the thriving private sector in Arlington to be supportive. They pay often into our utilities and art. Why aren't they paying into schools? Let's expand those programs, working with the Dream Project, working with Edo Futuro. Um, these are all programs that help our communities of color reach academic goals and thrive and reach new heights. I would also want to start with this incredible work NAACP has done with Voice and ASHBA. That's a school, incredible source of information from parents and families. I would start there. And again, as I've always said, I wouldn't expect parents and families to come to the school board meetings. I know that if, if elected, it's on me and my job to be out there in the community. Whether it's, it's the Voice meeting or the NAACP meeting or the ASHBA or Civic Associations or the Bolivian Festival or the Heritage Festival. And this is what I do anyways, who I am. So that's how I would approach being on the school board.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fish Tyler?
First of all, I, I know what actually goes on in the schools. So I, when I go out and talk to parents, parent groups, I know what I'm talking about. I spend a lot of time on the phone with parents. Uh, I spend a lot of time, uh, with the, uh, special ed, uh, folks working on how we can improve, um, instruction for the, um, students with disabilities. I have a long history with, uh, minority communities with the NAACP as well. Uh, the job of the school board is in part, is up and out. You have a down and in part, but you represent the schools to the community. I accept that. I can do that full-time. I'm retired. I accept that responsibility. And I think, uh, actually that the superintendent has, uh, taken a lot of, uh, spent a lot of effort doing that. I think, uh, the school board needs to, uh, assert itself in that regard.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Two last questions. I'm going to ask for you to please take forty-five minutes, forty-five seconds to a minute to answer these last two. First question, how do you see community-based organizations filling the First question, how do you see community-based organizations filling the gaps that exist in development? Both in education and behavior? How could using COBs add to the current APS goals? Ms. Clark, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, I mean, I'm torn on this and I'm torn on it because I hate the fact that we'd have to go out to other community-based organizations to help provide the support that we should be giving our students in our schools. I mean, that, that is, that is the challenge of it. Would I, would I want to have community engagement? Yes, we have a plethora of retired citizens that love to be engaged in Arlington. It is a strength within this community. And I would love to be able to do more work with those, with those uh community groups. Um, Aspire, you know, um Dyslexic Education, those are all examples of community organizations that come in and, and can help support.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Fish Taller?
Um, community-based organizations can help. Um, uh, it's a little bit more effort. Uh, I think uh that uh there are environmental groups um and uh other groups that work with particular kinds of topics or students that can come in and help out. But that takes a lot of effort and uh effort on their part, effort on the school's part to make sure that uh that their contribution is valid and helpful. Uh, takes work to make that work. So, yes, I also think that we should be looking at some of these com- companies that are making huge amounts of money on defense contracts, doing artificial intelligence research. We need to get them to come in and give us a hand as well.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Tapiya Hadley?
Yeah, similarly, that was my first reaction. So often we, we ask especially our organizations of communities of color to now also put the burden on them who are already burdened, right? So I'm, I'm very careful of that. That said, I do think there's a lot of room for partnerships um with schools in terms of what I mentioned in terms of connectivity, helping students feel seen and supported. Absolutely, let's look for ways to partner there. And most important, and also have students be aware of these, some of these incredible programs that can help them be college ready um or provide scholarships or just help them, you know, again, with specific subject matter where they may need support. I also think it's really important to highlight that these organizations are ex- have a lot of expertise. And that's expertise that can serve the school board and can serve sci-facts. And that is how I would want to come in to highlight these organizations as experts um on many of these issues.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Lane?
I think you have two parts of this community-based organizations. One, that's what I mentioned of a community of experts, of people who have expertise and certainly we should use those. Um, and the other is just uh parental volunteers uh or retiree uh volunteers. I think that's something that we could really use.
Please mute? Thank you.
The, the thing that really helps students um more than anything else is an adult, if you ask people, um, what made you successful in school? There was an adult that cared about them. And a lot of students get this and a lot of students don't. So if we can find students that are having trouble and pair them up, just like a uh an extra large Big Brother, Big Sister program, but for education, specifically for education, where we can have those volunteers come in and help do the one-on-one intensive tutoring that we don't have the manpower to do currently. That will make a huge effect on, that'll have a huge effect on our student life.
Thank you so very much. All right, we have made it to the final, final question, which we will roll into your closing statement. So given everything discussed today, what final message or commitment would you like to leave with our community about your vision for our schools? Please wrap that into one minute with your, as your closing statement. Uh, Ms. Tapiya Hadley, would you kick us off?
Sure. Well, I'd like to say I'm kid-centered and educator-approved. I'm the other candidate who also received the endorsement of the association of, of the Arlington Education Association, very excited about that. Look, I will be a leader who shares your vision and brings common sense and connection through care for our students. I think that's the root of a lot of the challenges that we're talking about. My goal is to build and to rebuild trust where it's been lost with APS. Be it teachers not feeling that they can speak up, principals not feeling they can come to APS with challenges. I know that's a tougher ta- reality, but trust, connection, common sense, and equity are at the heart of what I want to bring to APS. I believe in ground-up decision-making. Again, taking in the input from our key stakeholders. No decisions made without those who are going to be impacted. I want to support and encourage teachers, staff, and students and reward growth. We have everything we need to go from surviving as a system to thriving. As a school board member, I'll ensure that we have a community-centered approach to communicating and decision-making. And if you choose me, I won't be shy to ask the tough questions. I have done it with members of Congress, with Fortune 50 executives, and I will do it as a school board member. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Fish Taller, one minute, please?
Okay, um, so teachers are our most important resource. Everybody agrees on. Post-COVID, our teachers are struggling under greatly increased workload and stress. We need to fix that. I, I know how to do that. I have experience in governance. I've devoted my whole life to creating the future. And that future is in our schools. Uh, I would please, I would ask everyone to read the AEA and uh PACS endorsement. Uh, take it seriously. Um, I can devote myself full-time to being a school board member. And I can work with uh everybody on the school board.
Ten seconds?
So I'm uh asking for your number one vote, not for myself, but to signal all the teachers that you really do care about them.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Lane, one minute, please?
Thank you, you know, for all the insightful questions. This was one of the better ones we've had. I want to talk about the reimagining statement question earlier. Um, at my high school, they tried so many things. They tried school within the school. They had teachers come to the same classroom. They had, I think, five different like experiments running to see how they can improve the outcomes of the students there. Um, but those students have been neglected for a long time. Right? And that little, that little bit wasn't enough. And we need to do the hard work, the inconveniently hard work to address long neglected problems. And it's a thing that every school suffers from, APS is not unique in that. Public schools have allowed me from, come from where I didn't speak the language, a single word of the language, and was on free meals to a director at a Fortune 25 company and super successful in my life because of the great teachers that I had and the great public school education I had. And public schools are supposed to lift all boats, and they don't. And we need to, we need to make it so that it is. And we can't neglect the students just because it's not convenient.
Ten seconds?
And I hope to earn your vote as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. And Ms. Clark?
With everything we talked through tonight, it is evident we have a lot of work to do very quickly. A candidate is elected must be able to jump into role A1 and contribute to oversight. In January, we will have no one on this board with more than three years of experience and tenure. We don't need any experience to get in the way of the reforms we need to make now. I'm an experienced candidate with years of advocacy efforts to drive change for our most overlooked learners. And taking my experiences as an advocate, listening to the community, and having working relationships with folks in schools and central office, knowing who to contact to ask questions and influence changes will help me provide governance and oversight for APS A1. As an auditor, a plan, ask the right questions, I dig deep. And all of that has equipped me with the skills to look at end-to-end processes, and I spend time looking at billion-dollar budgets. I'm a proud APS graduate, graduate, and I graduated APS ready for success. I want the same thing for each and every one of our students, particularly those historically left behind. And I want our next generation to graduate APS, being career or college-ready. I would be honored to serve your children by providing them with equitable access to a world-class education. Please rank me number one in the May School Board Caucus. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Before we conclude, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of our esteemed candidates for participating in tonight's very insightful discussion. Your dedication to our community and commitment to improving our schools is truly commendable. And I would personally be remiss if I did not publicly state the responsibility that goes along with caring for our youngest citizens in the county and their education. Best wishes to each of you as you continue your journey in serving our community, community. And I would also like to express my sincere gratitude to President Hemminger for inviting me to moderate this very important panel. It has been an honor to engage with our community and to facilitate this meaningful conversation. To my fellow community members, thank you all for your contributions, both this evening and most notably day-to-day behind the scenes. Without further delay, I'd like to turn the program back over to President Hemminger.
All right. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. Um, I want to do something real quick, so stay with us for about two minutes, folks. We're going to remove the spotlights for a moment, and don't mind me looking at these other monitors. Uh, I'd like for all of our audience members to actually turn your camera on if you're in a place to be able to do so. Um, to just show some gratitude, love, appreciation for uh all of our candidates tonight and our esteemed moderator. Uh, folks, they made it look easy. They must have set their thermostat at fifty-two because I didn't see any sweat. Uh, but we're not an easy group to have a forum with. And so uh Moderator Bryant, you did an excellent job keeping the conversation going. Candidates, I love that you were really able to bring a diverse perspective into each of those questions. Um, so there's lots of love going on on your screen. I hope that all of you are able to receive that. Uh, before we close this out, we do have a couple of special guests um that joined us. So Senator Favola, I see that you're with us this evening. Uh, would you like to provide a couple of brief words to our membership?
Oh, thank you, uh, Mike. It's always a pleasure to spend time with the uh Arlington NAACP chapter. I really enjoyed the uh, the school forum, so thank you so much. Uh, Monique, you did a wonderful job and thank you to the candidates. Uh, and I thought the questions asked really um tried to tickle out whatever insights the candidates might have in reaching the various communities that um are so important to, to reach as school board members. We have to involve everybody and we have to ensure that every child achieves success. And I could see that mission in, in the questions, and I appreciate the fact that the NAACP and Monique you were able to put those, those issues on the table. Um, you know, we're going back for veto session on Wednesday. We will do our very best. We uh, as you, you know, you, you all are pretty savvy. We don't have enough votes in either chamber to uh override the governor's vetoes. Uh, and he has given us many, over a hundred fifty in bills and about a hundred thirty-seven on budget amendments. Uh, and some of these vetoes are, are really very um alarming, and I'm, I'm sorry that, that we have to deal with them. I think the silver lining is the Democratic majority has ensured that we did not lose the progress we've already made, you know, in gun safety and improving access to reproductive care and uh in funding our public schools. We're not going to roll back on that, and we are going to continue to fight to uh increase additional funding to our public schools and our at-risk pass-through to our schools who are, they're a Title I. And um, I mean, we just understand that a good public education is really the foundation of success. So through Louise Lucas, who was chair of our Appropriations and Finance Committee, and uh Luke Torian, who is a delegate right here from Prince William, chairs the House Appropriations. I uh, the budget conversations are not over, and we will continue to fight for the values that we know will grow the Commonwealth and uh, and will build uh the equity uh community in the Commonwealth that we really want. So, thank you. And thank you for ongoing support.
Thank you for being with us and thank you for your membership. I thought I saw Board Member Cunningham. Are you still with us, Board Member Cunningham?
I am here and I can't be on camera right now, but really appreciate the conversation today.
Awesome. Thanks so much for being here and thanks for being a Silver Life member. I see we have uh school board member Sutton with us. Would you like to say a couple of words, Board Member?
I feel like it is not that long ago that I was sitting in the hot seat. Um, but it's been baptism by fire on the board, and I um have been taking a lot of pride in the work that I have done to try to really advance equity in our system. Um, it, it is a, a critical priority for me. It's very close to my heart. And um, we have a lot of kids in Arlington with a lot of needs, and we really need to attend to those needs. Um, uh, in this budget season, we're having a hard time figuring out exactly how we're going to do that. Um, but we are determined to do everything we can to meet the needs, especially of our marginalized kids in Arlington.
All right, awesome. So I'm going to bring us to a close. Just a couple of announcements and I'll get us out of here. Again, a big thank you to all of the candidates. Thank you so much to everyone in our audience this evening. Thanks for joining tonight. And thanks for those that will uh watch the recording. A big thank you to uh the executive director from Challenging Racism, Mo Bryant, uh for moderating this excellent discussion this evening. A recording of the event will be available on our YouTube page in the coming days, and we'll also be circulating it uh via our mailing list and our social media. A couple of quick reminders, uh, to learn more about how to participate in the endorsement vote, uh, please see the link that I dropped into the chat. Uh, all the information is available on Google. Uh, as a reminder, the NAACP is a nonpartisan organization, and as such, we do not make any endorsements for any candidates or parties. We uh welcome candidates from all political parties, and while we're not advocating tonight, this program was geared around engagement and education. Uh, we were not able to locate candidates running for any other party besides the Democratic Party. Um, and so while our forum, forum tonight was limited to these candidates, should other candidates from other parties decide to pursue election in the 2024 primary or the general, we will ensure that our membership, our partners, and our community has the opportunity to hear directly from all candidates. I want to bring us to a close with a quote and a prayer. Um, the quote will come first, and then in my case, at the very beginning, I failed to uh open us up in a brief word of prayer. And so our Religious Affairs Advisor and Committee Chair uh did provide a prayer for us. So the quote is from Rita Pearson, and it says, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." I thought that was a very fitting quote for us. Um, and if you wouldn't mind, uh, I'm going to close this out with a brief word of prayer um from our Religious Affairs Committee. "God of all power and love, we give thanks to your unfailing presence and the hope you provide in times of uncertainty and loss. Bless us with kindness and peace to enkindle in us your holy fire. Revive us to live in unity in Arlington, the world, a people who pray, worship, learn, break bread, share life, heal neighbors, bear bad news, seek justice, rest, and grow together. Wherever and however we gather, unite us in common prayer and send us in common mission that we, our communities, and the whole creation be restored and renewed." So thank you all so much for joining us. We'll see you here on May twentieth for the Arlington County Candidate Forum. Thank you and good night.